I hereby call the board of District 200 School Board. Mrs. Hudson, would you please call the board?
Mrs. Crabtree?
Here.
Mrs. Erickson?
Here.
Mr. Gambiani?
Here.
Mr. Hanlon?
Here.
Mr. Matheson?
Here.
Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Mr. Roman?
Here.
Because Dr. Schuler doesn't have enough on his plate at the beginning of a new school year, I'm going to call upon him to leave this on the plate for you.
As allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is a public hearing for the approval to open the public hearing on the 2018-19 budget. I ask for a motion in second to open the public hearing on the 2018-19 budget. Move by Mrs. Crabtree.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Paulson. Uh, Mrs. Hudson, would you please call the board?
Mrs. Crabtree, yes. Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes. The motion to open the public hearing on the 2018-19 budget is passed. We are now have an open meeting on, open public hearing on the 2018-19 budget and we have no comments, alright? Therefore, I ask for a motion to close the public hearing on the 2018-19 budget.
No move.
Moved by Mr. Paulson.
I'll sign it.
Seconded by Mr. Hannah. Mrs. Hudson, would you please call the board?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes. The public hearing on the 2018-19 budget is hereby closed. Are there any modifications to the agenda from any board member?
Is this where I ask?
Okay.
I want to ask that, um, number eight on the consent agenda, do you move to an action item?
Mrs. Erickson has asked that we move, uh, consent item, consent agenda item number eight to an action item. It will now become action item number two, right before the discussion item. Are there any proposed modifications to the agenda? Turning on, we move to public comments on agenda items. The opportunity to speak to the board provides for members of the public to have a question or a comment on an agenda item. The board appreciates the experience of stakeholders and values of thoughts and questions. The board strives to make the best decisions for the district and public input on a variety of things. It's very helpful. The board must protect the stability and forum of this meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board and democratic process in your comments tonight. Please use the microphone, state your name, and address your comments to the board. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Tonight, Mr. Paulson will time the comments. He will raise his hand at the two minute thirty second mark, which allows you, if he informs you, you have thirty seconds more to complete your comments, and then we will, um, cut off the comments in three minutes. Please be factual and courteous and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. If you feel your matter needs to be discussed in more detail, please attend the board's chance to chat or present your comments to us in writing. The first individual I have signed up for public comments tonight is it, Taran Sante?
Taran.
Taran Sante?
I'm done now?
It takes a few seconds. You put it all the way up.
There you go. I am Taran Sante. I am a parent of mine. So I'm going to read this because I'm already shaking. Okay. "I was told that I speak passionately about Jefferson, but everybody already knows how much I love it. So I'm here to show my support with many other families within the community to the school board. Thank you for continuing to push for a new facility for our littlest learners. Some people believe that there's nothing wrong with the building when in truth, when the truth is that only two-thirds of the gym can be used since a portion of it is needed for specialized equipment that has nowhere else to go in the building built for a standard elementary student. And the lack of the bathrooms near, near any of the classrooms and the fact that the wheelchairs used by students don't fit in many of these bathrooms. And the last time that I spoke to the board was about a fix that was done due to levels of lead in the water in my daughter's classroom, which was fixed, but it really makes you wonder about other parts of the building. There's more, but I only have three minutes. Also needed to state the fact that a person in the community had previously made a discriminatory statement on December 12th, 2012, and I quote, 'Don't build a magnet that's going to be pulling more special needs children into the district that we're going to have to educate the whole way through,' when speaking about Jefferson. This is a fact, a fact that this current situation is not about the building itself or about the children within it. So please, continue to do what is needed for these students. Continue to do what you have to spite the negative comments thrown at you. These childrens need to be welcomed into our district and treated with the care that they deserve. I was told that there was concern for the homeowners, but what about this new cost and delay? The process has been ongoing, but the fact remains that this new situation will cost the district more money than even a cheesecake. Money that could have been put towards education or towards a school that would allow these students to learn and do things that they never could at the current Jefferson, and that is priceless. I'm not a lawyer or a public speaker, but I pulled the school code and did my own research. And while it's not as cut and dry as one would hope, I do believe that you are doing something that is within your elected power. I would not be here otherwise. So, avoiding my support of what you've already decided, I'm supporting the time, effort, and money that has already been put forward to make our district better. Thank you."
Leave it on.
Leave it on, sir.
Uh, the next speaker I have signed up is Mindy Coachling.
Hello, guys. Uh, my name is Mindy Coachling. I live at 26W 333 Harrison Avenue in Winfield. I have two children who attend Sandberg and another who will be in kindergarten next year. I'm a lifelong resident of the district. I'm a taxpayer and I'm a voter. I've been to many of these meetings over the past several years, but I've never gotten up here to speak. But I felt so much anger and frustration in recent days that I felt it imperative to share my comments or some comments with the board, Dr. Schuler, and the community members here tonight. I'm here tonight because of Jefferson. I have a long professional relationship with Jefferson. I work as an early intervention service coordinator, and over the last fourteen and a half years, I have transitioned well over 100 children with developmental delays and disabilities into the early childhood programs at Jefferson. This is a challenging time for many families, but I try to give parents some peace of mind by singing the praises of the program and deflecting from the fact that the building is cramped and deteriorating. I'm also a parent of a child who attended Jefferson. My oldest son, who is now going into fourth grade, attended Jefferson as a tuition-paying student for two years. He had previously received speech and physical therapy and early intervention, and I knew that I wanted him to attend preschool where there were specialists who could keep a close eye on his development. The principal, teachers, and staff at Jefferson are an amazing group of people. They do incredible work and they deserve a healthy and safe environment in which to educate our littlest learners. I also worked with the Friends of the Schools Committee last year on the referendum, and if I'm being honest, Jefferson was the main reason that I was drawn to becoming involved. I spent so much time at Jefferson as a parent and a professional over the years, and I've also had the opportunity, opportunity to visit early childhood centers in other local school districts. Seeing the beautiful facilities that they have but that we lack is heartbreaking. I know that we can and we should do better. Putting a band-aid on Jefferson is not enough, and it will never be enough. But I'm really here tonight to say thank you. Thank you for the work that you all do for our schools and for our children. Thank you for selflessly volunteering your time to make difficult decisions on behalf of the community, and thank you for making Jefferson a priority and for keeping it a priority. One angry individual does not speak for this community, and she certainly does not speak for me. Please don't give up. Thank you.
The third speaker I have signed up is Megan Legler.
My name is Megan Legler. I'm a Jefferson and a now a Johnson parent. Um, so thank you for allowing me to speak. Regardless of the decision that's ultimately going to be made regarding Jefferson, I simply want to say to each of you on the board, to the district, and to Dr. Schuler, thank you. Thank you for everything that you do for our kids. Thank you for empowering the schools of this district through a constant renewed commitment to excellence. Thank you for prioritizing Jefferson and the need in our community and recognizing that all community members, regardless of ability, age, or income, deserve access to an excellent education. Thank you for choosing to rise above the call of the civilian and embody the true meaning of citizenship by contributing greatly to my community and making a lasting difference. My number one goal as a parent is to raise my sons to be contributors to their community, to find solutions, not problems, to build relationships, not barriers. This is what Jefferson is all about. There are two traits in particular that are taught and experienced every day at Jefferson that this entire community, children and adults alike, could gain something from. Those two things are the power of an open mind and the power of the word yet. At such a young age, my child is able to rationalize that one truly does not understand a situation, a need, or a person until you open your mind and you walk in someone else's shoes, until you try to experience and empathize with the struggles, until you take a moment to quiet your own thoughts and attempt to examine from all sides. You cannot truly have an open mind, and thus, you are not entirely able to make a sound, rational, or balanced decision. Because of these teachings from Jefferson, he has a better understanding of compassion, collaboration, and citizenship. My child understands that not everything is equal or fair for all, and if he keeps a closed mind, those things will never change, a community will never grow, and those with no voice will suffer. Even more powerful than an open mind and the most amazing thing to witness is the power of the word yet. He understands that he has limits, and he cannot accomplish everything he wants to, yet. When he struggles, I hear him mumble, "I can't do it yet, but one day I will." He has learned perseverance and has gained a conviction that will empower him to serve his community and to help where he can. Everything seems to come down to this us versus them mentality, and it's not. We are a community. We may be at a crossroads, but an open mind can bring us together, and the power of yet can help us persevere. So thank you for echoing those same sentiments and teachings throughout the diligent work of the district and the board. Thank you for keeping an open mind to accomplish all goals and needs of our community. Thank you for exhibiting perseverance and conviction to make what's needed happen, and thank you for giving the children of District 200 a brighter future.
Our next speaker is Diane Thornburg.
Good evening. My name is Diane Thornburg. Uh, I share the longest residential property line with Jefferson Preschool, and I'm a prior CUSD 200 employee for sixteen years. Too often, we are driven and motivated by what impact our decisions have on ourselves. I appreciate that this Board of Education is looking at our children in this community first. Recently in the news, we celebrate every adult at a ballgame who gives away a caught ball to a child. Providing a secure, safe, and supportive educational environment to our youngest and most at-risk children in our community must deserve the same positive attention, shouldn't it? The risk to our board is high. However, due diligence was followed. You know, tax increase and a survey numbers were gathered to see how our community views what's going on with Jefferson. This isn't about high school sports or there'd be a bad bigger crowd. It isn't about middle school sports. It's about providing the foundation of who we are and what we do in our community to our youngest children who will pay it back in everything that they do. The lawsuit has no such numbers validating them. The cost of a lawsuit to us as taxpayers, the only numbers that are present here were those of the voters who voted our present board members in. Our present board members are who will be representing the community, not those who lost in the election. Thank you for looking at this situation with open eyes and a heart for our youngest members of our community.
The next speaker is Michelle Delmaso.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Delmaso, and I am the president of the North-South Shootout Lacrosse Club, and we, um, represent Wheaton-Warnville South Boys, Wheaton-North Boys, and the Wheaton Co-op Girls Program between the two high schools. And last year, we came to the board asking, uh, for your approval to adopt lacrosse as a sanctioned varsity sport. And with your support, you made that happen for us, and since then, it's been a fully funded parent program. Uh, we can't thank you enough for your support, and we've had a very successful season last year with over a hundred and twenty student athletes in the program. This year, we're expecting at least a twenty-five percent increase. I know at least that the boys at Wheaton-Warnville South, I haven't gotten all the numbers for all the programs yet, but, um, we have maintained an excellent rapport with the district administration and our athletic directors between the two high schools working with our club. As a club, through parent support and community, uh, support, we were able to purchase each program all-new helmets and other safety equipment. This year, it is our hope to provide new varsity uniforms for all levels or for all the different programs we have. And after collaborating and cooperating with school administration, it is both parties' desire for the district to take on lacrosse as a fully funded sport for the 2019-2020 season. This will allow for continued growth of a sport by having another cost-effective option for students looking to get involved in athletics. We've had many players from our all programs participate in Division One, Division Two, Division Three, as well as playing college club team at the club team level. We're asking you to consider, uh, to fully fund high school lacrosse for the 2019-2020 season. Thank you for your consideration.
Um, the next speaker I have is Kelly Yellen-Walter.
Hi, my name is Kelly Kuzlofsky-Yellen-Walter. I am a lifer. I have lived in Warrenville my whole entire life, and not only am I a product of this district, I raised my children here, and now I have a granddaughter attending Jefferson Preschool. But I'm here to talk about lacrosse. I currently have a sophomore, and he played for the first time this past year at Wheaton-Warnville South. They had an extremely successful season at both the JV and the varsity level. We had several players who were, had desired flight, but due to the cost, we were unable to fund them. Um, we would like to see our program grow. We have a bunch of boys coming in at the freshman level who will be part of our JV and varsity teams, and we're asking that for the 2019-2020 season that you fully fund us. Um, our parents made a huge commitment. We volunteered our butts off to raise money and to make sure the field, um, spots were all covered. Um, I know Healy, um, over at Wheaton-Warnville South was very impressed with the fact that we never turned to them to do anything. We handled it all ourselves, and I know at Wheaton-North, that was the same situation and with the Girls United team. So if you would consider, we would like to see this program go. I can tell you that over ninety percent of the boys at Wheaton-Warnville South were academic all-conference. Um, I think that's pretty impressive considering the time that they put in, that they're able to also maintain their GPA, and I think that says something for the quality of these boys and the time and efforts they put in, and that furthers them, as Michelle said, for playing at the college level and down the line. And creates some really awesome boys and girls, so thank you.
The next speaker we have signed up is Joseph Mahadi.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, board members, and of course, the superintendent. I'm here, of course, to speak about the Jefferson situation, and I wish to give some guidance to the board members in particular because I'm very concerned about whether there is enough directors and officers' insurance to cover each one of you. And here's what I'm talking specifically about. A number of years ago, we received from the state over fourteen million dollars to do Jefferson. Jefferson was not done. The money was spent for other things. And now, many poor parents who desperately need some response are finding that this situation continues to be challenging. Ladies and gentlemen on the board, you are in the service business. You are elected to office, and I am concerned that if you do not table both of the items this evening, that you will create jeopardy, and that we don't need because then we won't get anything done at District 200. The other item I want to speak to with respect to this is the action item number one, approval and assignment of contracts and approval of building permits for the Early Childhood Center. It's my limited understanding that this has not come out of committee and been approved, but in fact, there has been a million-dollar escrow created and that over half of that money has been paid by the superintendent to contractors. Now, I don't understand under what authority that has been done. I do not see that there's been any board approval. It's actually coming up now after the fact. We must maintain some integrity. We must maintain some procedures in order to be functional, in order to handle the people's money. So I would respectfully ask you, please, table both of these items this evening because we want the best for District 200 and all our students. Thank you.
Uh, the next speaker we have signed up is Melissa Hott.
Hello. I really don't have anything prepared. Um, I just first want to say I also want what's best for District 200, and I am one of those families that benefit, my two children benefited from our early childhood program. And I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, thank you to the board and to Dr. Schuler for standing behind these kids because these kids matter and these families matter. I ask that anybody who opposes this respectfully, if you've ever stepped foot into Jefferson, if you've ever talked to the teachers and above all the families who are at Jefferson, I would really like to believe that you would feel differently. These early childhood programs work magic, and the studies have shown. So I just, all I wanted to say was thank you to all of you. I have every faith that everything was done correctly. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sherry Gosic.
Good evening, board and attendees. My name is Sherry Gosic. I am the W, um, Wheaton-Warnville Special Needs PTA, in the event for reading in. Um, I, I am the president. I have four children with varying special needs in the district. One, um, is going into Franklin for sixth grade, so, and I have three that are going to second grade at Lowell. Jefferson Early Education Center has helped my children grow in speech, occupational, physical, and, and, and mental health. Given the limited space of other learners like our own, this may be difficult. The growth has prepared them for the least restrictive environment, allowing them to know what life of a functionally living, non-medical, non-special needs changing role, to know a normal life like their neurotypical and/or non-medical friends. The teachers, the support staff, the administration helped us teach our, helped us, helped our children to advocate for themselves and for their friends. We are proud to be District 200 family to support all the schools in the district to Jefferson, to transition. Transition ready them for life, Jefferson ready them for school and beyond. Recently, the Wheaton Park District Special Sensory Playground was featured on the Disability Report, uh, by ABC. King Teeny also has a special needs playground. Oakbrook has also will be opening theirs on the 22nd. We would like to see that Jefferson Early Childhood Education have the same accommodations that a playground does, if not more. The referendum was not against special needs, but we would like to also remember that this is where our heart is, that these children in our district are our future learners and our future bosses, CEOs, and tradesmen, so thank you.
Final speaker we have is Bruno Barron.
Hi, everybody. Um, my name is Bruno Barron. Uh, I am from Highland Park, Illinois. I'm not from the district, but I, this lawsuit did come across the transom that I looked at. I have, um, I'm a lawyer here in the state of Illinois, licensed to practice, and I have a few comments on it because a case like this is of interest to me at times. I don't practice law very much. I do a few other things, but when I do practice law, it's usually, um, in the two instances that I'm, I'm, would put it this way, I'm two oh and one in cases, and one case was against a school district that tried to take a board seat out of contention at an election. They lost that one. And the other one was in the Illinois Constitutional Convention vote where the legislature put palpably false information on the ballot, and we fortunately sued to get better ballot language on the ballot in favor, not in favor of a constitutional convention, but at least non-illegal and unconstitutional misleading language on the ballot. So, a guy like me comes out of the woodwork when, um, you see a government agency doing something that it probably shouldn't be doing. There may be a very powerful need for Jefferson School. Um, I'm not from Naperville, and I don't want to argue with all the wonderful people here who think it's a great idea. Maybe it's a great idea. Uh, the problem is, it lost twice, the two referenda, and now, um, who knows how a judge would rule on something like this if it goes to court, but having lost two referenda, having a state, uh, law that says you have to give a referendum to pass a building, that you get a building to be built with debts or bonds or spending, having lost twice, there is essentially the way I look at this, is nothing short of a, you know, a, a possibly legal, barely legal, possibly illegal artifice to get a building that the voters have rejected twice. If you want your wonderful building and you need your wonderful building, win an election. And if you lose two elections, then maybe sit down with the people who might want the building but don't want all the taxes or all the spending or everything that comes with it and figure out a way to get the building. I would submit to you as a lawyer who, you know, doesn't practice much, but practices enough, and I can read a statute, and I can, uh, I can look at the case law, and I can see what's being done, and I'm just looking at this lease agreement, and I would, as the previous speaker said, be very careful about, uh, voting on something and putting yourself in the position where you're engaging in a contract on something that may turn out to just be considered, um, invalid would be perhaps the best word. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak.
I have a lot of, the lawsuits.
The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Schuler?
Thank you, Mr. Roman. A couple of things that I wanted to share with the board this evening under, under my superintendent report. One, I think I've shared this with the board in a previous communication, but you received this and I'll send it around. So as the board is well aware, we partnered with a couple of other school districts a few years ago to launch an online program done in collaboration with Districts 203, Districts 204, called the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program. Has become wildly successful, especially as a summer opportunity for students across the three districts. I think this year, Faith, I don't get the number wrong. How many enrollments do we have in some between the three districts?
Six hundred and something like that. Summer, or so.
So the number has expanded significantly, certainly across the district. So recently, Elo Consortium as a model of collaboration among school districts was recognized as a district of distinction through the District Administration Magazine. So they sent us this plaque that I wanted to send along for the board to take a look at. And in that spirit of, I think, sharing accomplishments, also, we just learned recently there's an organization that does school rankings across the state of Illinois. Nish is followed, especially by realtors, as often referred to, certainly as folks are looking to purchase or relocate a house within the community. District 200, this year, last year, we were ranked the 10th best school district in the state of Illinois. Moved up this year to the eighth-ranked school district in the state of Illinois. More importantly, though, of that, each of our schools was ranked with, in minus rating or better. And just a quick note, because again, I think it reflects some fine work that they've done around some targeted areas of school improvement. Johnson Elementary School had the most significant gain. It moved up over 300 spots in the rankings. For an elementary school, moved up to an A-minus rating this year. The district overall rating was an A-plus. Both of our high schools received an A-plus rating by that organization. So again, I just think it speaks volumes to the quality of opportunity and education available within our school district. Obviously, we start school next week. And so we have been working hard on, obviously, final preparations for the start of the school year. Just a couple of things I wanted to share and highlight with that. The last couple of days, we've had an opportunity to work with our new teachers at District 200. A couple of board members were able to join us for the opening session with, with our new teachers. We have got, I think, a phenomenal group of teachers and our principals have done an amazing job of finding, hiring, bringing into the school district. They were incredibly excited and I think got really some valuable information as, as they get ready to start. So we are extremely excited for that. I want to send a quick thank you to Mr. Farley, to Mr. Robinson, and the crews that have worked hard to get our buildings ready. We've highlighted in previous meetings a number of the construction projects that took place across the district this summer. We had, I believe, nineteen fairly significant construction projects that encompassed secure entry improvements, paving projects, some flooring projects. We have, a lot of work that was happening across the district. And in spite of all that work that's wrapping up, obviously, they've also got buildings cleaned, ready to go. About the same point that they're doing that cleaning, Rod and his crew come in to make sure that all the technology is, is working, is functional. I think this summer alone, Rod, how many new devices that we introduced to the district between laptop, Chromebook?
Two thousand.
Two thousand devices that got brought in, set up, dispatched to buildings. So it's a lot of work to get all that set up. And we are, we are incredibly thankful for that. Faith and her department, a week ago, led a Week of Learning. So Week of Learning is, is an opportunity for staff to come in, get some professional development over the summer. They're certainly not required to do so, to come into that. But we had about 250 of our certified staff members that came and joined us for a variety of Week of Learning opportunities. Really had some phenomenal courses. Some led by our teaching staff within the district, some led by our administrators. And again, very, very, very important. And then the last thing that I wanted to mention, we had a meeting this morning with eight of our buildings that are participating in a grant opportunity through the DuPage Regional Office of Education. So the DuPage ROE came to us almost a year ago with an opportunity for some of our buildings to participate in a combination of a research study with a grant opportunity. It really focuses on three things. How we bring together at the administrative level some time-study information that helps our administrators look at how they maximize time spent on leadership activities in the building that truly enhance and bring about greater learning opportunities for staff and students. Two, what they do with that time through some cycles of inquiry, training. And then, three, some support structure that comes from a coach, an external coach, that comes in and provides some support with them. Each of the buildings will receive over the next five years about $25,000 worth of professional development, money that comes as an opportunity through the grant. But again, beyond that, I think it's just creating a very exciting opportunity for us to continue to look at some new opportunities to enhance learning. And then finally, I just want to end on this note, and that's for anybody that's, that's here. We are fully staffed, are very close to fully staffed in the certified teaching front. I think we've had a couple of positions that have adjusted recently. But if you have followed certainly any of the writing on kind of education and teacher shortage, while we've been able to fill our positions in other parts of the state, there is a significant teacher shortage that is finding its way up. There just are not as many college students in teacher prep programs that are graduating and coming into the job market. And that paired with the number of vacancies that have come up has created some very, very significant shortage issues. Where we're seeing that is that oftentimes in the past, as we were looking to fill instructional assistant opportunities that are very, very important for a number of our programs, student support programs for students, we've been able to use teaching candidates that may just not have found a job yet. We don't have the volume of candidates. So we have a number of instructional assistants, vacancies that are posted. If anybody that may be interested in those positions, we're working hard to recruit any, any way that we can. But certainly would invite and welcome support from the community and sharing that word that we are looking to fill those positions. It's not uncommon that we would go into the school year without all of the positions filled, but we are even a bit shorter than we normally would be at this point, leading into about a week away from the start of the school.
Can I ask a question on that?
Again.
So I know that we've had problems with the TAP test in Illinois. That's been something that has caused less students to participate in programs. Are we still, do we still have restrictions on where we don't have reciprocal license with surrounding states like other states do?
A lot of that has been cleaned up in Lawrence, good news. So I think we, there have been some restrictions that were lifted, and I think has started to hopefully shift that trend as we move forward. But we're just going to go through, I think, a phase where there's a shortage of candidates.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Schuler?
I have one question. I was going to wait till consent. But those nineteen projects that we did this summer, those are part of the 2017 referendum, correct?
Correct.
Just to clarify, you mean the one that was defeated?
Same one, yes.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. And please bear with me as we go through this. Number one, acceptance of gifts from Lowell Elementary School PTA. Two, acceptance of gifts from Madison Elementary School PTA. Three, acceptance of gifts from Sandberg Elementary School PTA. Four, acceptance of gifts from Washington Elementary School PTA. Five, acceptance of gifts from Westbrook Elementary School PTA. Six, acceptance of gifts from Edison Middle School PTA. Seven, acceptance of gifts from Wheaton Memorial South High School Tiger Claus. Number eight has been moved to an action item. Number nine, approval of First Amendment to Transition Program lease. Ten, approval of resolution approving travel, meal, and lodging policy. Eleven, approval of resolution regarding petition for detachment and annexation. Twelve, approval of annual certification of serious safety hazard bus routes. Thirteen, approval to increase paid lunch price. Fourteen, approval to dispose of surplus technology assets. Fifteen, approval of Palo Alto firewall subscription services renewal. Sixteen, approval of Blackboard Connect and web posting agreement. Seventeen, approval of Gaggle Safety Management Renewal. Eighteen, approval of CIMS Software Maintenance and Support Agreement Renewal. Nineteen, approval of Cisco Smart HAMS renewal. Twenty, approval of the Microsoft Volume and Volume Licensing Agreement Renewal. Twenty-one, approval of statements of completion, 2018 summer projects. Twenty-two, approval of bills payable and payable. Twenty-three, approval of minutes July 11, 2018 open. And approval to destroy recordings and close sessions prior to March 2015 as allowable by law. And twenty-four, approval of personnel reports to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence to the ministry that served by class or non-union staff. Are there any other items board members want to move to the consent agenda? Sherry Moon, Dr. Schuler?
And that's just a couple of quick comments. Number one, you're accepting a number of gifts this evening. I think the first seven items on the report. And I'm just trying to do a quick tally in my head of the value of those gifts, but I think we're approaching $100,000 with those items. And just an interesting note, you're approving a gift from the Washington PTA. That PTA has taken upon itself to do some fundraising and try to address some of the improvements within the Library Learning Center that came out of discussions in our master facility plan. So happy to see those projects moving forward and thankful for all the support of our schools. And then the second thing I just wanted to mention is board members in your green packet. You have a spreadsheet that's pretty small type, but on the statement of completion for all of the projects from this summer, we just wanted to make sure that you can reconcile from the actual expenditure per project where we were to the overall budget for this summer. So you anticipated spending $3,823,377 on those projects across the buildings. You actually spent $3,708,143. So we came in about $115,000 to the good over what you anticipated spending through the bids that you accepted for all of those projects.
Any questions or comments of Dr. Schuler? Here we are. I asked for a motion on the second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Moved on Mrs. Crabtree. Sanctated on Mrs. Erickson. Mrs. Hutchison, would you please call a roll?
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes. The consent agenda has been approved. Now we've moved on action items. The first action item is approval of the 2018-19 lacrosse formation agreement. Dr. Schuler?
Thank you, Mr. Roman. So you, board heard a little bit of public comment this evening on the lacrosse program. So just by way of history, we were approached a little bit over a year ago, actually probably more than a year ago, to start having a conversation about lacrosse. Lacrosse got fully recognized as an IHSA sport. And so as we worked with a group of parents, obviously very, very, very involved and dedicated to that program, last year, we brought to the board a recommendation that we bring it on, but bring it on as a fully parent-funded program opportunity. I think the desire for that is one, I think, the district's position a year ago in terms of finances pre the school funding formula being finalized and those disbursements coming and just kind of where we sat, we weren't sure financially. If that was a viable option. And two, we wanted to see how program implementation went. And so I would concur with, I think, what you heard in public comment this evening in that the implementation of that program in year one went incredibly well. Both of our athletic directors and high school principals reported that there were no, no issues in terms of bringing that program in. Clearly, Michelle and the other folks that were involved in their leadership on the club worked hard to make that happen. What we brought back to the board this year is a recommendation to renew that donation agreement for this upcoming year. We did pull one piece out of that donation agreement and that in the past, it was an automatic renewal opportunity, and we pulled that automatic renewal out. Our intent is to recommend to the board that you bring that in as a full district activity for the 2019-20 school year. There are a couple of things associated with that that just in kind of answering the question in terms of how it's going to work. We don't charge, we don't charge those students to participate in lacrosse. Because of the donation agreement, the student fee to participate, which is obviously substantially higher than any of our other high school athletic activities, is paid directly to the club. It's the donation agreement with the club, then it reimburses the district for the costs associated with that. And so, while it's not part of the donation agreement approval tonight, the prospect of bringing that in as a district activity, it does mean as the district sets fees for the following school year, and that would include your high school athletic fee, then we would have to wrestle with what is the fee for lacrosse, which could very much be the same as it is for all of the other activities. You will also then have an opportunity at that point to just look at your athletic fee and determine if in fact, perhaps, an increase to that fee is warranted across the board. So I think there's some options for the board in terms of how you manage certainly the finances. The club has taken care of a couple of significant capital components that were a part of that transition through the purchase of helmets and the renewal of uniform that's set to happen this year. And through our conversation with the club, they do also set on some reserve within the club that could be used to offset those transitional costs into the district. So I think there's a good opportunity that's in front of us again. I would concur that it appears to be an activity that I think is going to sustain and grow in terms of opportunity. And again, involvement of our students in any activity and opportunity is perfect. I think we have acknowledged that whether, whether it's in the arts, whether it's in athletics, activities, we've got a myriad of opportunities that are available to students. And I think it's important that students participate and certainly be involved. So again, our recommendation certainly is that you approve the donation agreement tonight and that we would bring back certainly to the board in late fall as we begin discussion around the fee structure for next year. Our intent would be to bring to the board at least for your consideration the transition plan that would bring that into the fold. There are a couple of other high school sports where you have a unique agreement with. Certainly, high school swimming is one of them, where over and above the fee that students pay, the regular high school fee, there's also a pool rental fee that gets absorbed by parents. And I think this discussion around lacrosse, I think, is an opportunity to look at a few of those opportunities as well in your both revenue expenditure, you know, solution to see if we can bring some equity to all of those programs.
So when we get, I know I've brought this up before. I'd like an opportunity to see what true costs are. And when I say true cost, I mean what we're asking parents to pay above the amount. I know that's a difficult thing. But I still would like us to look at that so that when we are looking at fees, we really have an idea of what parents are actually paying. So I'm going to ask that we, before we do that, we have all of that information.
We will do our best to capture all of that information. And again, I think as you recognize, capturing the direct fees that they pay, meaning whether it's obviously to the school or directly to an activity account is easy. Sometimes capturing what the cost of a fundraising activity is is a little bit more difficult, but we will, we will do our best to gather all that info for you. but we will, we will do our best to gather all that info for you.
I have a couple of questions. The program now is, the coaches are not staff of the district. And my, I want to make sure that the cost does not escalate significantly if we bring it in because I would assume we have to use our staff to be the trainers or whatever the case may be.
Point of clarification, we hired the coaches. So we hired the coach, so your cost for a coach will not change as we bring that in. A requirement of bringing it in as a recognized sport under IHSA is that we had to hire the coaches for the program. So that cost was reimbursed to us, but the actual setting of the payment for coaches, that was determined by the school district, same with trainers, same with transportation. We arranged and did all of that per our normal procedures. The club just simply reimbursed us for those costs.
Okay, do we do that with other sports as well? Third tardy, non-certified staff trainers or our coaches, I guess is better word?
Yes. Yeah, not all of our coaches are teachers within District 200. Many of them are, some of them do not teach.
So that would not alter the cost, okay. And then I thought I heard or I read in one of these that there were certain students that may have been excluded because of income levels or they couldn't afford the cost. That I thought is, you know, not allowed under this agreement or would not be allowed under our program. Is that true?
Students that qualified for free and reduced lunch did not pay fees. The club did take care of that. I think maybe the comment that you heard is it may have been a student who didn't qualify in the free and reduced lunch, but found it to be a hardship to pay a higher fee. That may have in fact happened, but yes, they did not pay for free and reduced.
So I'm going to comment, I didn't want to take this down on fees conversation. Maybe I'd just like to echo what Chris said, which is I'd like to start that analysis early, as early as possible, because I think it's going to be difficult. Like you said, the data's not necessarily 100% clear, but I would like to start earlier. If I remember right from the list before, there was a lot of disparity in the amount of fees paid, whether it was arts or swing dance or sports. I just wanted to spend more time looking at that. Thanks.
I think in light of that too, I think there, you know, maybe we haven't, maybe we haven't, but I would like to try to develop a standard to say that we fund X percent of the program or, you know, fees fund another percent, you know. I think we've touched on that in the past and I would like to see that as part of that analysis so that we can, you know, really get a handle on the equity of it all.
Any other questions, comments of Dr. Schuler or the staff? Karen Dunn, then I ask for a motion and a second to approve the lacrosse donation agreement as presented. So moved. Moved by Mr. Paulson. Seconded by Mrs. Erickson. Mrs. Hutchison, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Bronman?
Yes. The 2018-19 lacrosse donation agreement is approved. The second action item to address tonight has been moved from the consent decree, or consent agenda on me. And that's approval of revised policy 7.40 non-public school students, including parochial and home-school students. Dr. Schuler?
Thank you, Mr. Bronman. So the board has this evening with that agenda, it was a recommendation that you do approve the policy that you put on public display at your meeting a month ago. There have been no changes to that policy in the last month, no additional comment received outside of the meeting. I think Mrs. Erickson pointed out one or two kind of minor typos in the policy or in the text that we will certainly get that clarified, but no change in the substance or the wording of the policy. So we certainly recommend that you approve the revised policy 7.40 this evening. And just as a point of making sure we clarified to the board, after our meeting last month, we did notify parents and begin working with parents that had an interest in using that policy or enacting that policy so that they could start getting signed up and certify their courses. So we have begun that process. We cannot wait until this evening to begin that work.
Any comments or questions of Dr. Schuler? Mrs. Erickson?
Yes, I had asked if we moved to the action section of the agenda rather than kind of burying a real long consent agenda, just because I feel like it's worthy of a few more comments given the conversations we've had so far. And I think that there are probably parents with us this evening who are interested in where we are in this and where they think it's going to go. So I was hoping to make a couple of comments there and I didn't know if anybody else had any thoughts before we voted. I spent the summer trying to get a better, continue to get a better understanding of all of the issues surrounding this. Talked to a lot of people on the original policy committee, parents in the community who home-school their students to get an understanding of how they do that. And officials at other schools and organizations that partner in some way with home-school families so I could understand the whole landscape. I plan to vote to approve it the way that the language stands. It's essentially reverting to our old policy with the one change that IHSA put into play recently, moving from the requirement of 20 credit hours a semester to 25. So that's the only material changes I see in there. I just wanted to make the comment that, well, my understanding is that we will use this policy as we move forward if there are going to be any further revisions. So whatever we were to approve tonight would be our starting point for the next. And it is my hope that I'll go to the policy committee, of which I remember, for further discussion. I feel like we have gathered a lot of information. I've shared a lot of what I've learned with my colleagues on the board. So I feel like we have and can most of the information. I think we would need to determine this. I'm hoping that if any of my board colleagues have any more comments or questions on this, that they will submit them to Dr. Schuler so that that information can make its way to the policy committee. I have made my comments and questions known to him. Some of those questions so just the public is aware that we really are looking at this whole issue. The overarching question to me is, do we feel comfortable allowing home-school students to participate in our extracurricular activities, especially IHSA activities, if we feel like we can find a way to work within IHSA regulations, which is what we've been doing for the last 20 years? So that is the main question. Another question that was kicked around earlier in our discussions is, are board members comfortable with the continuation of this policy, much as it stands, with the thought that it can address the idea of the integrity of the District 200 to 12 months by looking at our policies surrounding graduation requirements? So that hopefully would be something we would discuss in committee. And I just wanted to point out, because there was some question early on in conversations about whether we can adequately approve and oversee home-school students study outside of our walls. And I just wanted to point out from learning about State of Illinois regulations, essentially the State of Illinois allows parents to home-school their students. They operate pretty much on the honor system and they reserve the right to require proof that parents are doing what they're being asked to do. And I feel like our policy in the past is essentially they're doing the same thing. We let home-school parents know what our requirements are. We assume they're following them, but certainly we can reserve the right to require proof of that at any point in time. And I guess we need to decide, do we want that kind of comment in writing, which it hasn't been in the past? My understanding is it's occasionally been expressed over the years by people who are implementing our policies to let people know that, but I haven't seen it in writing anywhere. So I am also, one of my other questions would be whether we should have a written document or a section of our website that specifically addresses how we go about partnering with home-school families so that it's information that's easy for people to find and understand and follow. I think that'll be helpful to the home-school community. I also think it'll be helpful to our staff to not have to recreate the wheel with every home-school family that comes forward and has an interest in being involved with us. And the final thing on that is, and we've had this administrative procedure that we saw out there which hasn't really aligned either with our policy as we have it on a books war with the procedures that we have been actually following day to day. So I'm hoping that as we take a closer look at the policy, we can also put together an administrative procedure that actually mirrors what we're really doing and follows all the rules that we need to be following. My final note on that is I have heard comments about the possibility of Citizens Advisory Committee being involved in this process. I honestly feel that that's an unnecessary sidestep because I'd like to see this get resolved sooner rather than later. And I think we have a lot of information we need. I think among the seven of us who are charged with the policy that, with another, with people submitting whatever information or comments they still need to and having a good discussion both in policy committee and at a board meeting, I think we can wrap this up sooner rather than later. I'd see it take the entire year or it's like for yet another committee. So that's my note.
I would also like to add on to Jenna's comments. I'd like the other, I think if we lose two or three other policies, six points, six point three, yeah, to also be looked at at the same time because I think that, you know, we have restrictions for our students that are currently in our schools and the number of classes that they can take, whether it be online, outside of school. And I think as we're looking at this policy, we need to look at all of that and make a decision with those as well. So I'd like that to be also charged to the policy committee itself.
May I add now, was there a law that just changed in Illinois that enabled dual credit courses, removed restrictions on dual credit courses or other, students taking other programs outside of the school?
There was a law that helped to try to remove some barriers to a school district's ability to work with their local community college partner to establish dual credit. So dual credit actually has been a kind of a growing opportunity to provide opportunities for kids to take college course, work well with us, but there have been some restrictions. And candidly, our local community college has, at times, has been difficult to get some dual credit opportunity through because of the requirements around a teacher that operates within that domain. So not major changes, I think, programmatically rather than going to kind of shift that, but hopefully will remove some of the barriers to get more courses approved as a dual credit
So that would not necessarily have a direct impact on these related policies that Chris brought up?
I don't think so. I don't think so, except for the fact that, no, because a dual credit would be a course that's taught within our walls of the high school, so it's already in our program would not, I think, would. But what Chris was referring to is the policy that talks about correspondence and opportunities for courses outside of our buildings and lifting some of the caps or the kind of the barriers that we have around that. So it's a little bit different than a dual credit.
Any other questions or comments of Dr. Schuler or the staff?
Yeah, I'm going to comment relative to Jenna's comment regarding the Citizens Advisory Committee. I've been consistent on this. I too agree, that's a 36-member committee who does great work and looks at many big picture things in the community or in the district. And I just believe this is such a finite, silo-driven situation and policy that I think we've got success that is shown in a smaller committee that's very focused. And to Mr. Matheson's point from the last meeting, you know, we're, it appears that we're very close. And to put this in the hands of a 36-person committee, to me, makes no sense. And so I'd like to have that removed prior to the vote. I support the 7.40 rollback. You know, Jenna, you've done a wonderful job investigating and bringing wonderful information to all the board members, but again, I don't see the value. I see this as a distraction using the CAC versus getting a smaller committee that understands the situation and can move very swiftly and very quickly on that particular topic that's most sensitized to it. So that would be my only request before the vote tonight is to suggest that we would look at a smaller committee to address this matter.
I think it's a simple, just point of clarification, that's not part of the motion. So all the board is approving tonight through your motion is the policy itself, certainly the direction around how you want to move us forward. I guess the, just the one point that I would offer and not that everything's got to run through CAC. I think what the policy committee needs to continue to do is wrestle with some of the questions that Mrs. Erickson has identified, but determine where you need points of input. And it may well be that there are some individual components of this or the other policy we're talking about where you want a broader base of input that might come out of CAC, I think. Regardless of the committee that you use to do this, all you, what you're framing out is where the points of input that are going to guide the revision of policy and certainly give us that direction tonight. I don't think that's a decision you need to make tonight, but I'd like when it goes back to policy to just make sure that the policy committee reserves the opportunity to get whatever feedback that it determines it needs based on the problem you frame out. You may not need it. You may. There may be some issues where you do say, I'd like to get input from a group of 36 individuals that represent the kind of a nice cross-representation of our committee. But just the recommendation dies simply to approve and implement the policy.
So just to be clear, so what you're suggesting is that we're not going to develop a smaller committee of parents who home-school, parents who don't home-school, board members, senior leadership team members, you're saying that will not happen?
I'm saying I don't think we mapped out a specific process. I think this is going to go to the board's policy committee to determine what in fact you need to do if there's any additional. It may be that the policy committee determines there's no future study that's needed around this. If ultimately, you know, you're happy with the end around this policy and determine that there are other adjustments. But I would send it there and then let that committee kind of recommend or drive a process for any future change.
I have a question regarding that. Am I correct in understanding that the policy committee can, when we put that item on an agenda, we can choose to ask or invite others that we want input from to come to that policy committee to help us?
This is a board's meeting. You can invite whoever you choose and in fact, it's a public meeting, so other people can choose to come whether they are invited or not.
Can I just speak up, maybe you can clarify for audience, because I've heard from some that feel, if a recommendation from the Citizens Advisory Committee means that that's a decision, that that's not, could you clarify that?
Absolutely. So when the board authorized that advisory committee starting, it is an advisory committee. They have no decision-making authority. Only the seven people sitting at this table have decision-making authority. So that committee does not at any point have the ability to bind the board to a decision. They simply have the ability to provide feedback and ultimately if you ask them to, to provide a recommendation of a course of action.
Any other questions or comments of Dr. Schuler? I have a motion and a second to approve the revised policy 7.40 non-public school students, including parochial and home-school students. So moved. Any questions? I can't answer. Moved by Mr. All right, there we go, here we go. Moved by Mr. Gambiani, seconded by Mrs. Erickson, Mrs. Hutchison, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Bronman?
Yes, the motion to approve revised policy 7.40 has passed. Next item on the agenda, discussion item addressing Vision 2022 Strategic Plan, Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, so I'm going to let Alquist take this discussion. So just recap, the board, you approved, I believe at your last meeting, the Vision 2022 Plan itself, as well as the revised dashboard set of metrics. And what the board asked me since was to bring back kind of a concept of an implementation plan. So this is not for approval this evening, it's not for action this evening. What we wanted to do is bring, present this to you, let you have a little bit of opportunity to digest the information that you will see from faith and that you actually have a hard copy of in your green folder. And then we've got a kind of a recommendation on how we move this forward and also determine the specific goal plans or work priorities for this year, so.
Thank you. I'm going to move over here so that you don't have to swivel as far to look at.
I'm going to move over here so that you don't have to swivel as far to look at me and up at the screen. So, on Vision 2022, just a reminder for everybody where we're going, that we're putting all of this together so that we have a common vision that we can communicate to everybody, that we can put on our priorities for our resources and time and money for the next four years. Accomplishments so far, we do have this four-year vision. We have had so much collaboration from different members of the community, as well as staff and administration. We've created a dashboard that will be present on our website to report the progress on this, and we have a calendar of annual reports for the board that will give more detailed information than what's available on the dashboard. But we still have some things to accomplish. We want to map out a four-year plan from now until 2022 to make sure that we can get all of those things accomplished. We want to have principal feedback on that, which we did. We put our four-year plan together and then we took it to all of the administrators on our first day back on the August 6th administration time, just to get their feedback, because you don't want all of us to collectively say, we will implement this in 2022, and then the staff reels from all of those pieces. So, we wanted to get their input into which years made sense to kind of bring some closure to some of the items on Vision 2022. And then we want to work with the board, that's what we're going to do now in the next meeting, to determine is this, does that meet what you want to accomplish, and then determine the annual priorities and the work plans for the items. Okay, sorry in the audience, this is really fine print, but for board members, did you have a hard copy of this? And what we have done is gone through for the next four years and itemized in brief bullet points that would fit on a page, what are some of the key areas that we would accomplish. And I'll just highlight a few things under student learning. SEL has a big component as we were working through and a high priority from staff and administration on what needs to be done and loading that early. Then if you look at the last two items, with looking at future communication trends, that's all that writing, speaking, video production, really high priority, but it's going to take a while to implement and get all of that in and get training. That would not happen until 2122. Also on this page is looking at some of our, some of our awareness and things around multicultural diversity and those pieces. You can see that we're looking at a three-year plan where we would be implementing segments of that each time around. So, some of the goals and things, you can see a lot of progress in detail early on and then not as much detail. That doesn't mean that we don't have ideas on what we want to do, but we believe strongly in the collaboration with the community and with the administrators. So, some of this work will be done in committee and we'll be building details as we go. If I go on to learning support systems, one of the big areas of focus that's immediate is the school improvement and district improvement process called MTSS. And with that, this year, we're implementing new interventions at middle school, and we also want to analyze and we'll look at all of our district assessments and see where that takes us as well. Community and parent engagement is also outlined on this. Some of the work that will be done this year is looking at the Five Essential Survey so that we can look at parent, student, and community feedback, and then building this out for the next three years. Of course, we're going to be talking about facilities management and keeping all of those items going while still staying within our budget, and this maps out the four-year plan for that as well. We've updated the calendar, the reports for the board to include more frequent updates on all the items in Vision 2022. So, we'll have several items throughout the school year where we give an update, even if that's not a particular work plan area of highlighting and focus of that year, so that you can keep track where we're going. When we got together and talked about, well, what would be the possible work plans for the board for 2018, 19, these are the things that we talked about. With student learning being the SEL highlight piece, with the learning support systems being that school improvement and district improvement system, which is really complex, looking at all of curriculum and assessment and universal plus interventions plus special education. Community and parent engagement, that piece of five essentials and looking at that structured format so that we can gain feedback from all of our stakeholders, and then continuing to address projects in the facilities master plan. So, our plan for the next step is we want you to have time to review all of these plans that we have here. You can send comments or questions to Dr. Schuler, and then we're going to start committee meetings that we would schedule to review the work plans and the Vision 2022 implementation chart. And then we would come back in September after we've had those meetings for a discussion and approval of these documents.
Just to clarify one element, so you have four major kind of broad areas within the strategic plan. I think three of those four areas pretty clearly align to a board committee that can work to not only make sure that our implementation plan for these things makes sense, but can help us to monitor those items certainly over the course of the year. The one that doesn't necessarily fall as neatly into one particular board committee is all of the learning support system piece, but I think a lot of those things fall under teaching and learning as well. I do know there's been some board discussion of question or thought around SEL, social emotional learning, kind of being governed under its own committee piece. And I guess what I will certainly remind the board is that you have some standing committees within your board policy identified, but you always have the ability to create kind of an ad hoc committee if you need to for a short period of time. So, if that's an interest of the board to have kind of a separate committee that governs not only that work plan, but that's a multi-year goal to track with it, you certainly can do that. We can create, you know, kind of in essence, a short-term ad hoc committee that can continue to monitor. So, I would guess, I would, I have to guess, I would recommend in the short term that all of the work under student learning and learning support systems fall underneath the teaching and learning committee. Clearly, the community engagement pieces would fall underneath the community engagement committee. And then obviously, you have finance and facilities committees that can, again, monitor the respective elements that fall within that. So, review, please get some feedback either to me or to members of that committee once committee assignments are finalized. And then we would, over the next month, begin to establish some of those committee meetings to just make sure we have the implementation plan structure in a good place that you're comfortable with. We have your priorities effectively identified for the coming year. And then in September, your next full board meeting, we would bring back any revisions to this plan, as well as drafts of the specific goal work plans for the year.
I have a question. Last, I think it was last month, we had a discussion about new state standards of evaluating performance of districts. And that was something that will appear in the report cards that the state issues. Will we see that type of data through this analysis?
You will also, if you go back, one to the monitoring, sorry, one more. So, Jimmy, in September, as you have always done in September, you monitor your performance data on both state assessments as well as our locally administered assessments. That is the, that is the time that you're going to be monitoring all of the information that not only is evaluated, but will be reported out on those report cards. So, yes. And then again, the last thing I just want to remind you is that your Vision 2022 plan is encompassing two things, both the kind of the chart itself of the program areas you wanted to address, but also the dashboard items of what it is that you're monitoring, which also goes beyond just what's on this. So, you're monitoring some key pieces of data on an annual basis, and then you're also obviously monitoring and overseeing the program improvement areas that are included in the Vision 2022 chart.
Okay, the other two.
Couple of questions I have are, one is on the financial and facilities management, there's something about a course which, I don't know what that is. And then secondarily, there's an item about the capital campaign. I don't know that I need that information now, but I would like to have some updated report in the near term about where we stand with that, how we're proceeding.
First question, on the calendar reports, is that something we can get a fresh copy of, or is there somewhere on the website that we can find that?
What, is up there?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, we'll make sure that you get that. It's out on the, it's certainly not on the website now because we're just bringing it to you for kind of review and discussion, but yes, we'll make sure of that.
Other than a few additional adds, this was part of a presentation when we talked about the accompaniment, the accompaniments that would go along with the dashboard for this. So, we can make this available to you, but it is part of the public meetings and things that had gone on before, with just a few add-ons based on this.
Grab?
We get a copy of this presentation?
Yes. Yeah, and let me again, just clarify, if any time that we bring an element of a presentation into the meeting, we will always upload it immediately following the meeting to the, both the public electronic school board, so everybody can access it, but obviously as a, as a board, you can as well.
When you say everybody, you mean the problem?
Problem.
Rob?
Yeah, thanks. Faith, I'm looking at the June meeting, which had, you kind of laid it, it's not up there. I'm looking at the notes from the June meeting, it has a model of the dashboard, and it had sample metrics aligned to what we're doing. Were those metrics tentative or just kind of suggested, or are those actually the metrics? Do you remember?
Those are the actual metrics.
When you were going through and laying out the plan, did you see the need to change your ad metrics to make sure we're aligning to the plan?
We did not. There are some items that will be easily captured in numbers on the dashboard. There are some more of complexities that will be in the reports, which is more of a narrative and an update on plans, but we did not see a need to change the dashboard.
So, I'm going to go back and apply those, write it in here. Is there, is there value in doing that in the overall document? I can do it on my own, fine. I just wondered if there's value for others to see the metrics aligned to.
Where it looks for the.
Yeah.
I would certainly appreciate that.
So, you, just for clear, do you want to do a crosswalk between the dashboard and this chart?
Well, I'd like, so there's metrics on the dashboard. I'd just like to see them within the section so I can see if the metric adequately addresses progress.
This kind of emphasizes the email sent to each board member today with the committee assignments. I'd like to get your feedback as promptly as possible. Already have received feedback from Rob, we'll make some adjustments on that particular committee assignment, so we can get these committees finalized, so we can start getting it up and running, so we can implement this 2022 vision plan.
So, can you go back to the four proposed work goal work plans for the year? So, this is for clarification, the top two, student learning and learning support systems are the ones that you had suggested fall under the teaching and learning committee?
Correct.
So, in the preliminary committee assignments that were sent out to the board, no communication, by email this afternoon, Chris and I had expressed some interest in creating a dedicated, maybe it's an ad hoc, one-year SEL committee, that you recall back to when we did the community engagement, engaged 200, we created a committee. Not suggesting that this committee needs to be that big, but just to kind of have a one-year dedicated SEL committee, I think would be pretty exciting. And I think Chris and I have already expressed interest to each other independently about volunteering for that committee and trying to kind of maybe supercharge that activity. We have a new assistant superintendent who's totally behind that, so that's our recommendation to the board is to create that, that ad hoc committee.
And as I mentioned, I think we'll put that as a topic of discussion at the next board meeting and see if we can flush that out, because I think there is some definite momentum to develop that sort of ad hoc committee. Any other comments or suggestions? If not, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is closed session. Closed session, I meant, a list of possible actions litigation when an action begins affecting or on behalf of a particular body, probably bodies and files, pending before court or administrative tribunal, when a public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case, the basis for the finding shall be recorded, handed into the minister in a closed meeting pursuant to five ILCS, one point slash two, so paragraph C, so paragraph 11. But accordingly, I ask for a motion in a second to adjourn the closed session for the purposes of discussing litigation. Moved by Mrs. Crabtree.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hanlon. Mrs. Hutchison, would you please call a role?
Before we do that, I'd like some discussion on that. So, very time. Unstoppable.
I don't think, there is no discussion when we move to closed session.
We're making a motion, I thought. I simply said, I'd like to give, there's some interest of parties in the audience that may wish to stay around because we will reconvene and how much time we anticipate this may go on and so on.
I'll be happy to revise that information after we vote on the motion for closed session. Mrs. Hutchison, would you please move a role?
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Broman?
Yes. And for those who are in attendance, we anticipate, we are moving to closed session. We anticipate that the meeting may last up to an hour, and then we will reconvene to resume the agenda items. I hereby reconvene this meeting of the district human and school board in open session. Mrs. Hutchison, would you please call a role?
Mrs. Crabtree?
Here.
Mrs. Erickson?
Here.
Mr. Gambiani?
Here.
Mr. Hanlon?
Here.
Mr. Matheson?
Here.
Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Mr. Broman?
Here.
In a motion in a second.
Going to open session? All right, may I have a motion in a second that we resume in open session?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs., Mr. Matheson?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Paulson. Motion is to resume in open session. Mrs. Hutchison, would you, Mrs. Hutchison, would you please call a role?
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Broman?
Yes, the motion to resume in open session was passed. Somebody else? All right, the next action item is the approval and assignment of contracts and approval of building permit for early childhood learning center. Before we address that motion, I'd like to read the following statement that's been crafted by the board leadership team. Following the April 2017 referendum, the Board of Education sought community feedback in order to move forward with critical facility projects. Given the outcome of the April 2017 ballot question and subsequent feedback, Board of Education understood that the financial impact of an overall referendum question is the primary concern to the community. In our survey, we asked the community to rate each project in the referendum and project some feedback based on feedback. We revised the scope of the building to reduce square footage, therefore reducing costs. In April 2017, the community did not approve raising taxes to address facility projects across the district. That does not mean those facility needs go away. They still need to be addressed. A ballot question does not ask the community whether the Board of Education should or should not complete critical facility projects. Rather, a ballot question asks the community if they wish to raise taxes, additional revenue to the school district in order to complete proposed facility projects. We, the Board of Education, explored the route of a lease agreement to address a significant facility need at Jefferson while avoiding additional tax dollars to the levy. Through various budget reductions in the 2018-19 budget, the board completed construction projects at 14 schools this summer, including eight secure entry projects, paving projects, flooring projects, and lease payment allocation for the new Jefferson. All of those projects were included in the April 2017 referendum. Again, even though the community did not approve April 2017 ballot question, we have determined that those needs do not and did not go away, and we must address them. Secure entries at eight of our schools were included in the April 2017 referendum. Should we not have completed those projects this summer because the community did not approve the referendum? I think not. Late last week, we received a copy of a lawsuit filed against the district by one of our community members. The lawsuit alleges that the District 200 did not comply with the Illinois School Code through the steps it has taken approving the lease agreement that provided for the new building. According to the Illinois School Code, we have the ability to enter into such a lease agreement, and the language in the lease agreement was very explicit that it only can be paid out of operating funds, not through. could be paid out of operating funds, not through additional tax dollars. The district adamantly disagrees with the claims outlined in the lawsuit. Supported by our legal counsel, we believe the district has fully, has been fully compliant with the school code and all our decisions. Claims that the district has not been transparent in decisions are simply not true. We have sent more than 20 communications from the broader, broader community outlining our process to determine a facility solution for Jefferson. With that said, the time and cost of resources to litigate this claim would be very costly to our community and taxpayers. We are not willing to take any more valuable resources from the three, four, and five-year-olds in our district that need us and deserve a facility improvement that meets their educational needs. To that end, I recommend that we do not take action on the two agenda items related to our early, early learning center. Instead, the Board of Education will hold a special meeting on Monday, August 20 at 7:00 p.m. to consider a resolution authorizing a question on the November 6, 2018 ballot. Again, we believe that we have been fully compliant with the Illinois School Code, developing a plan to construct a new building through a lease agreement. It is not to the desire of this Board of Education to spend the community's tax dollars fighting a lawsuit when the option of a November referendum question exists. That would take money away from the place where it is intended to be spent, that being on our students. Accordingly, I recommend that we table not only the next action item, which pretends to approve and sign with contracts and approval of building permit for the early childhood center, but also the next action item, approval of resolution authorizing, providing for the issue of not to exceed $14 million, these certificates of the district in accordance with the lease agreement, here for interdiction for the purpose of building and equipping a new early childhood center for the district, evidencing the rights to payment under said agreement, providing for the security for and means of payment under said agreement, assessed certificates, and authorizing the sale of said certificates to purchasers thereof. Do I have such a motion at the table? Moved by Mr. Paulson, seconded by Mr. Hanlon. Mrs. Hutchinson, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Broman?
Yes, the motion to table has passed. We will then go on to the next item on the agenda, which are written reports we have all received, a monthly financial report for July, and a copy of the FOIA report. Reports from board members, board committee reports, do we have any board committee reports there? Are there other reports from board members? As I mentioned earlier in our agenda, I have circulated an email to each board member about committee assignments and adopted school assignments. If the issue of adopted schools needs further discussion, we can have that at the next board meeting. If there are any proposed changes or alterations anyone would like me to make to those committee assignments, this contact will respond as possible. Topics for future discussions, the 2018-19 budget. September 26, 2018, Committee of the Hall will meet at 7:00 p.m. here at the School Service Center. Our next meeting is a special meeting this Monday, August 20, 2018, here at the School Service Center at 7:00 p.m. Our next regular meeting is September 12, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. at Royal Palmetto School. Do we have any public comments on our agenda items?
The sheet, the sheets, I just have...
I don't know what the sheet is. So... John, do they even have green sheets?
Well, the gentleman came in late and signed on that sheet.
There's no sheet.
Does anybody here have a comment to make on a non-agenda item tonight? There are none? There are none? There being no further actions come before the board in open session, I ask for a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. Moved by Mrs. Crabtree. Seconded by Mrs. Erickson. Mrs. Hutchinson, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Yes, the motion to adjourn has passed. We hereby adjourn.